Good evening, it is my duty to announce that the board had an executive session immediately before this meeting. And we're ready to begin our regular meeting. And we'll begin with roll call. Mrs. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Howden.
Here.
Mrs. Cosner.
Here.
Dr. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Maines. Mr. Muller.
Here.
Mr. Music. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
And Dr. Zorch.
Here.
And both Mrs. Maines and Mr. Music had informed the board before the meeting that they weren't able to be here this evening. Mr. Nagels, you have your report.
I have work, President.
Thank you. Dr. Lockwood.
Dr. Gordon.
Thank you. And I'll take education and planning with help along the way. And we'll begin with the student report.
Hello, I'm McKay Gunbeer and I teach at Latrobe. And before I start, I just want to say I've taken ceramics all year this year and this is better than anything I have ever made. It really, myself is terrible. I don't understand how else is good. Last week, fifty-five National Honor Society members took our annual trip to Chicago. We left around 5:30 a.m. on Thursday and stayed busy until the evening Saturday afternoon. Among many other things, students went to see the Blumberg, Federal Reserve Bank, the Shedd Aquarium, Millennium Park, the Museum of Science and Industry. We took a boat tour along the river and even got to watch a jousting tournament while eating medieval-style food. Which is kinda cool, kinda weird, kinda cool. And despite some ugly weather for the first two days, it was an amazing trip for everyone that got to experience it. On a personal note, I guess, and my favorite part was eating a deep-dish pizza. We got a couple hours to go shopping on our own and I got to try the pizza and that's it, that was worth the entire trip. And on another NHS note, the production ceremony of new members will be tomorrow, we make it 7:30 in the auditorium.
And Mr. Perenka has an enrollment report for us. It's in an attachment. If there are any questions, he's available right now. If not, he will be available later. And we're going to have a presentation from Mrs. Pelles. Dr. Tepper, are you part of the Mountain View presentation or?
Well, I am not. I do have an announcement that I will be passing around, the book that will be utilized in our intro to computer programming course that had been included last month. So feel free to look at the book. And then we do have Mrs. Pelles presenting for Mountain View Elementary City. So, Mrs. Pelles, you're on.
Okay.
Good evening, while that's coming up here, I'll introduce who's all going to be here with me this evening. I will be speaking for a part of the time. I also have our school counselor, Mr. Golden, here with me, a sixth-grade teacher, and a school counselor intern, Ms. Cafuzi, and Ms. Thomas, a first-grade teacher. And I also have six caring cats with me this evening, which is what we are going to be speaking about tonight. Caring Cats is a program that we have at Mountain View Elementary School. And the C's is capital A, capital C, capital A, capital T, capital S, because that stands for caring and taking a stand. This is our pro-social program that we have at Mountain View Elementary School. Some of you may talk about what is the anti-bullying program that we have. This is our anti-bullying program, but at Mountain View, we like to call it our pro-social program. We talk about how to be a caring cat in our caring cats that we have at Mountain View. So that we're sure to have caring cats there at the school. So we are going to be starting off with hearing from a few caring cats.
Hello, my, I am Jackson McCandy from Mountain View Elementary School. In December, I was a caring cat for Mrs. Petrowski in first grade. Cause I was nominated as a caring cat because I included my classmates at least one time.
Hello, my name is Karen Bernello. I'm in Miss Craven second grade classroom at Mountain View Elementary School. I love school. I was selected as a caring cat in March. I strive to be a caring person with my family, friends, teachers, coaches, and teammates on my classmates. I hope my friends in school. One day, a boy in my class was having a really bad day. He was upset and crying. I felt really bad for him. I decided to help him cheer up by helping and complete his score. I sat close to him all morning. After a while, I noticed he was laughing again. It made me feel good that I helped him turn his bad day around. I'm honored to be chosen as a caring cat in my classroom. I'm just one who's sure they care at Mountain View Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Liza Backstrom from Mr. Hooton's classroom, I'm VES. I'm a September 2013 caring cat from my fifth-grade homeroom. I have been selected as a caring cat each school year since it started three years ago. I hope to be a caring cat next year and to be selected to eat lunch with Mrs. Swiger. Thank you.
So as they say, caring cats, the C stands for caring and taking a stand, our pro-social program at Mountain View Elementary School. This is our third year with this program. There are two main components to this program. The monthly lessons, which you are going to be hearing about from Mr. Golden, Ms. Cafuzi, and Ms. Thomas. And then the other part is the actual caring cats, which you saw a few caring cats here this evening. A caring cat is nominated by a homeroom teacher, one caring cat per month. And each month, then, we do have quite a few caring cats at Mountain View Elementary School. When they are announced as a caring cat, that happens during the morning announcements, the students come down to the lobby to receive their certificate. This is a huge part of being a caring cat, is to get a certificate. Of course, it's signed by Mr. Golden and myself in orange. Big deal, they get their certificate that they get to take home. And many times I hear from the parents, those certificates end up on their refrigerators and/or framed to keep as being a caring cat at Mountain View. Here is a picture, when they come down, we take one big group shot for the month. So this here is March caring cats. So this was this past month. And they came, they come down to the lobby, they receive their certificates. And we take this main picture of all the caring cats for that month. But then we also take a kindergarten caring cat picture, a first-grade caring cat picture. So then there's a smaller caring cat picture for each grade level. All of these pictures get placed here on this bulletin board that is in our cafeteria. This is a daily reminder for all of our students that we have caring cats at Mountain View Elementary School. And this is what they look like for each month. Their picture gets up there, it's exciting, they get to see their picture every day whenever they go into the cafeteria. Also, the picture gets published in our PTO newsletter, which some parents get in paper copy, but many parents get that electronic. So they get to see their children here as their caring cat. And as you can see, here's our September caring cats in a PTO newsletter. However, I will tell you, one of the biggest things about being a caring cat is if on a certain day during that month, which just so happens to be the last Thursday of every month, we have a lunch with Mrs. Swiger. She comes to our building every month to have this special lunch with our children at Mountain View Elementary School. This is a big deal, if you get picked to be with Mrs. Swiger. You were randomly selected. So there is one caring cat from each grade level. So if you have a grade level with five homerooms, you have five caring cats. Randomly, one student is picked to come to this caring cat lunch. Here you will see one picture from a few years ago of a caring cat lunch. At the caring cat lunch, there's two things that the students need to come with to the caring cat lunch. In their mind, they need to know why they were selected as a caring cat for that month. We make sure at some point during the lunchtime, we say, "And why are you the caring cat this month?" We like to hear from the students why they were picked as a caring cat. We feel it's important that they know why they are a caring cat. Sometimes it is, just like Cory said, an exact moment in time that she was being a caring cat in the classroom. Other times, they're exhibiting a pro-social behavior throughout the entire month and they may be picked. Sometimes, it's a bus driver will turn names into me because there are students that are showing caring cat attributes during their time on the bus. We also have our Arm Corps teachers that will suggest caring cats to the homeroom teachers. Here is another picture, this is from last month at a caring cat lunch. And you will see there is one representative from each grade level, Mr. Golden is there, Mrs. Swiger is there. And we like to have this lunchtime to discuss why they are caring cats. And then there's a picture here. This is the second thing they need to bring with them to this lunch. They need to bring something with them that they are proud of, that they've done there at Mountain View Elementary School. Here is Jack, he's proud, he's a fourth grader, he's learning this year how to play this instrument. So he brought his instrument with him to show us how he is learning how to play this instrument with Mr. Milcheck and band. Other students might bring a spelling test that they have done well on. We many times have kindergartners that like to share their writing in their journal. They can bring anything that they've done there at Mountain View Elementary School that they are proud of. Next, we have our caring cat monthly lessons.
All right. Hi, I'm Mr. Golden, Jill Golden, counselor at Mountain View. This first overview here is just the monthly topics. Every month, this goes out to the teachers at the beginning of the school year. Every month, there's a topic. And there's a lesson each month that goes along with these topics. Below there, these are things that teachers can select for their student to be a caring cat. I think last month was respecting differences. So we had a lot of caring cats that were respecting differences. In January, we had a bully-free door decorating contest. Now, Mrs. Pelles would be proud if I said this. There was no instructional time taken away to decorate these doors. This was sponsored by a polar vortex. And the door recess that we've been experiencing. But this is, this is Mr. Sevatsky's door. So she'll be happy that I mentioned it. No instructional time was taken. Here's some of the resources that I use to do the lessons. Now, the teachers are, they're very much involved in these lessons. I take care of the kindergarten lessons. I use a lot of, up on the upper left, is the bully-free book, I use a lot in there. Others, it's just some children's literature that we've used. And this last one is a response card for a kindergarten lesson that I did recently where they're learning about a bully, the victim, and the caring cat. And it's really, to me, the program is really about taking the bystander and turning them or transferring them into the caring cat. Like, that's really the heart for me of this program. So the kindergartners use this response card, give me a quick assessment on their knowledge of the program. And we're going to send it over. This year, I have, I'm honored to have a school counselor intern, Ms. Cafuzi. She has been doing a fantastic job. She's a sixth-grade teacher at Mountain View. And she's going to talk about the teacher's perspective and as well as some of the lessons that she created.
I know, the kids keep going, "Is that the female Mr. Golden?" I'm like, "Yeah." I've been lucky enough to help with some of those lessons. And Mr. Golden mentioned that a couple of them have been these past few months, diversity and self-confidence is what we're working on. So in this lesson, the sixth graders were talking about prejudices and racism. And something that's been like really great about being able to see the program from A through six has been to see how the kids have learned something each year and what they bring to the next year. So in our next part, we did the door decorating contest, as Mr. Golden mentioned. And sixty had to win, were quite competitive. So we did, there's an app for that. And they created, is the next picture the descriptions? They created bully-free apps and they had to describe what the app might do, what they could press to help, you know, if there was a bully situation. So they took things like bons and bully crush and be bully-free and friendly chat. The next part is, with some of the lessons, we've incorporated a lot of technology and books and talking with kids about what kind of character do you want to be, what kind of positive habits do you want to have in the classroom. So this was an example of a kindergarten lesson where they were talking about what described them. And super and magical were really important to be in kindergarten, and I learned that. Another thing that we've been doing is relating a lot of the traits to books. What can they learn from literature, what kind of models can they have in the classroom? And surprisingly, the kids have really latched onto that. Been able to make a lot of connections to themselves and how they could be a caring cat and be selected.
Hi, my name is Heather Thomas and I'm a first-grade teacher at Mountain View Elementary School. This is a picture of me teaching last month's lesson to my class. And as Mr. Golden and Ms. Cafuzi had mentioned, we like to incorporate literature into our lessons each month. I also, with my team, developed SMARTboard lessons and use of technology as we are teaching the pro-social lessons within our classrooms. Each month, the lesson is provided to us from Mr. Golden and we choose the time most appropriate to teach it within our classrooms. This is a picture of the caring cats that I have selected for my classroom this year. They're always very excited to hear their name on the announcements and go down to the lobby to receive their certificate from Mrs. Pelles and Mr. Golden. And they're even more excited when they are randomly selected and are chosen to eat lunch with Mrs. Swiger. They take great pride in choosing a piece of work that they are proud of throughout the year and conversing with Mrs. Pelles and Mrs. Swiger at the lunch. This is a picture of our decorating door contest that we had. Each student created a flower and on the stems of the flower, they wrote characteristics of a caring cat. Such as friendly, nice, helping. And that is still up on our door today to remind us what a caring cat is.
There's a few things that we're looking at changing for next year. We always want to add in some new things. The next year, we've been meeting as a team through faculty advisory. And one of the suggestions from the staff, and I've actually already talked with the company, is they would like to have caring cat badges. And the students know that the teachers are wearing these around all the time. And so I've talked to this company, who takes our pictures, and they're just going to put our wild cats on. Here is the picture, a caring cat, and we will have one for each homeroom. And then during your time being the caring cat, you will get to wear an ID, just like the homeroom teachers. Another thing that we have talked about adding is having classroom caring cats. And we're working on exactly how that can look, but we're talking about having a classroom caring cat, one a semester, so two times a year. And that would look like in a homeroom, a homeroom that is following or doing caring cat things throughout their school day at Mountain View Elementary School. They would earn certain things and then the homeroom with the most would win for that semester. Things such as in the hallway, being caring cats at Mountain View in the hallway, you would be walking in a line, you would be quiet. And so if you would get a compliment from somebody else in the building, then of course you would get something to go toward your caring cat jar. So we would see who or which homeroom would be considered the caring cat classroom. A few more caring cats here with me this evening.
My name is Addison McCandy and I am in Mrs. Petrowski's first-grade class at Mountain View Elementary School. I am a November caring cat. I like having my caring cat picture up in the cafeteria for everyone to see.
I am Zandra Shuvi, a November caring cat from Mountain View Elementary School. Mrs. Quinn, my second-grade teacher, selected me as a caring cat because I have my friend David with this degree. I love getting the caring cat certificate from Mrs. Pelles and Mr. Golden.
I'm Katie Stephanie from Mrs. Canisha's fifth-grade homeroom. January 2014 was my first time being a caring cat. When I heard my name announced as a caring cat, I smiled in my class classmate. I am helpful to my teacher and classmates when I'm at Mountain View Elementary School.
This evening, I would like to nominate you, the board, as caring cats because you do care and take a stand every day here in Latrobe for our students. So thank you for all that you do and you absolutely are caring cats. You have the attributes of a caring cat and you do care and take a stand for our students at Greater Latrobe School District. Thank you, and if you have any questions, we're ready. And the caring cat certificates, I will tell you, are not only signed by Mr. Golden and me, which is the norm, but also the students that we have here are caring cats from Mountain View Elementary School. They have also signed these because they are thankful to have you here. Thank you.
There you go, should I sit once in a bunch?
And I just want you, we're going to do a video when you get picked to eat with Mrs. Swiger. I know it's a little part of her day, but it's a huge part of the month at Mountain View Elementary School. They love getting to have lunch with her and to let her know all about Mountain View.
I will tell you that if you ever are having a bad day, let me know and you can go to the next caring cat lunch with me. Not only do they very appropriately eat their lunch, but they all share what they view as the reason they're there. And sometimes, it's probably not quite the same as how it was explained to them. And secondly, the things that they bring with them to share is always so interesting. The trombone was one, we oftentimes have a musical instrument. But oftentimes, it's just something that they're really proud of. It may be a piece of artwork, it may be a test that they worked hard on. Even if it wasn't an A, it's something that they're very proud of. So it's a great experience. And I appreciate all the work that goes into it to get it to that point when I walk in. Thank you very, very much. Any questions? Thank you for coming. And thank you for our certificates, I'm really appreciating the signatures. The next curriculum meeting will be Tuesday, May 20th, at 5:30 p.m. CSC for our meeting. And next week on the agenda will be permission to host Westmoreland Sixth Grade County Core Survey in the spring of 2015. We don't have a specific date at this point, just asking for approval and then when the date is. And also approval for tuition student for 2014-15 from Leganier Morgan Smith, the ninth-grade students. And approving the dissertation survey for Mrs. Pineus pending Duquesne University's institutional review board approval. She's got a very, I like your topic because it shows the trust of a lot of the things we've been doing. She gave it to us at the technology committee meeting and, let's see, I've got to go around here somewhere, here it is. Mobile device ownership and its relationship to student engagement and the role of technology in student learning. I think that's a wonderful topic for our district and would be interested to know what to find out. And approving the revision of the 2014-15 school calendar with the first day of school as August 25th. And the extended weekend at Easter, I'm sorry, at spring break rather than the full week. And that's an attachment and that was the result of the two-question survey that was done between our two meetings. Do you want to maybe? I can certainly respond. We decided to do a technology survey after the last board meeting on those two topics on the calendar, the start date as well as the length of the spring break. They came back, we looked at parent responses, we looked at all of the responses, they were pretty much the same, approximately an eighty percent, twenty percent, excuse me, twenty percent split. And so the recommendation to the board for approval next week is to revise that to that start date of August 25th, which is the Monday, as well as Thursday, Friday, Monday for the spring break, Thursday being the snow makeup day. That does change the last day for students to June 2nd instead of June 3rd, one day. Unless there's anything to add to the curriculum, part of the education planning, rather, part of the agenda, we'll move to finance. Next week, our agenda will have the Treasurers report, the payment of bills, and budgetary transfers. The minutes from the Finance Committee meeting from April 2nd are attached. And you may have seen them by email before this. And the next Finance Committee meeting will be May 7th at 10 a.m. at the Admin Building. And as you were looking at the minutes from the April meeting, you'll notice that we discussed a new financial software package for the school district. So what can you go and tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, the current software package we use is very outdated. I believe it was purchased in 1999, so it's very difficult to get data from to, you know, forces us to still use multiple forms of paper, et cetera, and whatnot. So what we did is we went and did an RFP for financial software packages services. We received proposals from five vendors. Of those five vendors, we brought three in, we met with them, they did a presentation to us. There was a group of us that did the suspended review process. We narrowed it down to one. We had that company come back individually with each of the people responsible for the functions. So we'll be coming back with a recommendation on Tuesday to award that to Sunboard. Of the five proposals, Sunboard is the second lowest price. The lowest price post that we received, we actually did not invite in just because the functionality wasn't at the level that we wanted it to be at. We have done reference checks with Sunboard, received positive feedback from them. We actually use Sunboard for our student side, so there's compatibility that we believe, you know, we can take advantage of as far as, you know, screen displays and how, you know, similarities, I should say. So I will have a report to you with those numbers in advance of next Tuesday's meeting. I still am in the process of negotiating price slightly with them. But it seems like we'll be able to, as far as the price goes, there will be an initial upfront cost for implementation and training. But the annual reoccurring cost is going to be the same as what we are currently paying for a software package that is, you know, fourteen, fifteen years old. Some of the benefits that we see from this is to hopefully continue to eliminate the amount of paper that we utilize, the amount of printing that we do. We believe that, you know, all of our faculty and staff will now be able to access all the, we don't believe we know, will be able to access information, whether it's budgetary, payroll-related, purchase orders online rather than having to call or have us generate a hard copy report and mail that out to them as well. There's also a human resource feature. There's also a human resource feature to the software that will allow us to help to streamline the applicant process, so we can leave it's long overdue. So, I will have those numbers to you before Tuesday.
Good, thank you. That concludes my report. Mrs. Kozar?
We're going to start with the project update. Thank you, Kirk.
Good evening. We finally, finally, finally got a break in the weather and actually we've got quite a bit done this past month. We've been talking about kind of three major components that have been really delayed. Your metal roofing, site concrete, and your upper baseball and softball field, basically. The upper baseball field and softball field, the students have been practicing on the last, I'd say, two, three weeks. It's all... it's fully completed. The site concrete is nearing complete. All we have left is made in two sections, the handicap ADA ramp down in the fieldhouse, the walkway into the press box, the kind of monumental stair down at the fieldhouse and that plaza area has been complete. The metal roofing still has been a... gosh, I put this... I've not been a very good caring cat with your subhanded right here for your GC. So, it's been a kind of ongoing issue. We are pressing them very diligently. The press box is complete. The fieldhouse barrel roof still needs some additional work. And the storage building, remove the shingles and put the ice and water shield. We still have no roof panel to do there as well. Your four other primes, electrical, plumbing, your mechanical and bleached contractor are all substantially complete. So, basically, they're done minus punch list. So, you're basically left is your general contractor, which is kind of, as far as your exterior work is the, we call the decorative pieces or the jewelry on the buildings, the brackets, the signage, the logos and whatnot to be completed. And then, of course, the site work, you know, the kind of funnel grade, the turf and grasses needs to be completed as well. So, we're almost there, weather permitting. We can students on these fields as far as games. I know that's a big push that probably we can have, the CDs kind of in their final moments and then also graduation. So, that's a big push coming here in June. So, we will be complete. We'll be ready for graduation. And I guess as far as your other project, your junior high, I also just mobilized this past week. So, we've seen the trailer out there and some site fencing to kind of separate contractors from the students and they're ready to start this Easter break, spring break, really getting in there and doing some demo work. So, it's very exciting. We're going from wrapping up one, running to the next one. Project wise, hopefully we'll get things wrapped up for you and keep moving on. That, that's all I really have, is the final push. Any questions?
Maybe no bad.
No bad. If I get lunch from this waiter, it's okay. Any questions?
You could say no. Thank you. We will also have a bid opening for General School Supplies since an attachment on your agenda this evening. It's a very long list, so if you'd like to look at it and have any questions. And our minutes from our last Department of Supply meeting on April 3rd are an attachment and our next meeting is made in November 7th.
Thank you. Dr. Lawford?
On the agenda for next week, there is a photo below. On the agenda for next week, we'll be voting on several for the athletic department interns, which should be Sean House, who will be paid at the control.
Thank you.
He is a college student majoring in, I want to say athletic training at this education. It is an unpaid internship. He will be working in the athletic department with Mr. Mears as supervisor as an active intern.
And he gets credits, right? It's credit related.
Depending on the college and university. I don't want to say positively he does. Most colleges and universities do, but I'm not sure. He's going to IUP.
He's probably part of this program. He has to find an internship somewhere.
Sean is a graduate of Greater Latrobe, so he is.
Dr. Zorg?
There's an attachment in your computer about the Latrobe Native Parks Recreation Commission meeting. We also have a letter of support for the Latrobe Native Parks Recreation Grant Application. It's resolution number 178, letter of support for a grant to Department of Conservation Natural Resources for the Old Athletic Field Rebootization Project. My understanding, that field is where the duck park, he was in, and all those softball fields and soccer fields. I'm not sure what they're going to do with it, but anybody know for sure what they're going to do with it? Reply for money from... for the grant for improvement.
This is the area right across from our admin building. And ordinarily, we don't vote on anything at our committee of the whole meeting, but since we're going to be voting on this one, I'll ask first for comments from board members and second...
A motion to the resolution on 178, nurse. We'd like your meeting in Parks Recreation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, the voice over my shoulder is telling me that now is the time for comments. We'll ask for comments first from board members and then later from members of the audience if they have questions or comments as well before we vote. Any comments from board members?
Clearly, it's a great thing. I mean, I have many kids in the school district. My kids are all grown up. Through the years, we've spent a lot of time down at this field. Spent a lot of time at the duck park we ran. I mean, it's a nice facility. It's used all the time, all the time. And it's quite a shame that U D Township is opting to get out of this Latrobe Native Parks Recreation joint effort because everybody in the school district benefits from these programs. And I can tell you that U D Township, we benefited greatly from the Latrobe Native Parks Recreation programs that they had. So, it really is a wonderful thing. My understanding is that when we first went into this thing, it looked better to get grants and get money from the state or whoever, if you were working together as communities for these sorts of things. Put that to our U D Township supervisors as a public support for going back to, you want to be a joint venture between the communities and the school district. But clearly, this is a good thing for the community and it serves all kids in the community, not just Latrobe kids because it's in Latrobe. I mean, my daughter's five minute drive from down around 30 from ride to me.
And this also is that field where there are lots of soccer games are played every Saturday morning. Any other comments from board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The resolution is approved. Thank you, Dr. Zorg.
I have a... I was going to say that the reality tour meeting will be April 23rd at the community building in Latrobe. What is that street? Jefferson? Jefferson Street at 60. We're asking for all community members to come down and turn about so we can get involved with this sub program.
Thank you. Mrs. Mannings would be reporting to the IU if she were here and the summary of the board meeting is an attachment in your computer. And next week, we will have three things on the agenda. A word of a paper bid. I think that's a bid for paper from the consortium. Adoption of policies, procedures, and use of funds by us as per those same policies for the IU. And authorization to participate in Westmoreland County Schools Natural Gas Consortium for next year. Mr. Watson, you want to say something about that? Because we talked about that at finance.
Yeah, both items, D and E are sort of related. What we have done historically through the intermediate years, we've created different consortiums. I of D actually is the word paper bid through the IU Consortium. We give a joint purchasing for paper. We also do joint purchasing for diesel fuel and gasoline. So, what we are now doing is we're creating consortium for the purchase of natural gas. So, we like... we're requesting from every... but every participant is requesting from the school board's authorization to participate. That's D. E is authorization for representatives and it's similar to the diesel fuel. There are certain times in the market where you have to act quickly to lock in at a lower rate. And the authorization we're seeking is to authorize myself as representative, this is related with the alternate, to lock those rates in when we get eyes that, hey, you know, they've dropped and you might not lock in for the next six months. We can then, you know, give that authorization. So, those are the two items. We believe it's a good thing to participate as a group for that purpose.
And there's going to be another item on the agenda about the consortium. If it's created, that we have a representative on that consortium and that will be Mr. Watson and Alderness. And that will be part of our agenda next time as well. So, that's what that's all about. Mrs. Kozar, are you ready to report about the EWC?
You have a summary of the JOC actions. That's an attachment on your agenda. And we also will be approving the EWCTC 2014-15 operating budget to... do you like your...
Yes. Both Mrs. Swiger and myself attended a meeting with the EWCTC where they presented the budget to us. The proposed increase for the total budget is about 0.784%, so it's relatively minor. There is actually a decrease to our contribution for the 2014-15 year. It's a decrease of about $3,606. Just to remind everybody, the funding formula for all three of our sending districts is based on ADMs, the average daily sort of attendance, as well as the market value of each of the three sending districts. So, we did go through, because then they provided us with certain information, but they, we believe it's a very reasonable budget to move the budget through.
And the way that's done is it's a roll call vote and it has to achieve a majority of the board members present and voting at the meetings of the all three school districts so that the same resolution to approve the budget will be coming up in front of all three of us. And I... they've done a lot better with their budgets and it's a lot tighter and, well, we've all had to cut back considerably and they're just part of all three of us. Things are tight all the way around. So, that will be on the agenda next week.
Mrs. Albert, if I may add one more thing to it, just to put it all in perspective, you know, total, we're looking at an increase of about $26,000 to their budget. And retirement alone, they're being impacted just like the rest of us, just going up by $67,000. So, obviously, there are other areas they had to reduce their operations in to cover that additional retirement expense.
And next is the word policy. You will see a whole list of board policies that will be on the agenda next week for final adoption and those are all in your computers. There are very small changes, changes in words, basically, to comport more closely with changes in state law that have happened since the last time we adopted them. And as PSBA liaison, I hope you're reading the various lead-ins to newspaper articles across the state on various subjects. It's interesting how when we're talking about something, so is everybody else in the state. And we've had replacement of property tax as a way to fund school districts. We've had Philadelphia and the way they fund their school district and the way they administer discipline in it. We've had cyber charters. It's really very interesting. I'm getting hooked on this a little bit. I didn't like it at all at first, but maybe, maybe it's that old iPad that I inherited and makes it easier. I don't know. But anyway, I would urge you all to take a look at those things when you have a few minutes, like if you can't sleep or something. And Mr. Music isn't here, but if he were, he'd tell us that the Transportation Committee will be meeting Wednesday, April 30th at the high school. And Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Madam President. Our... we had a technology meeting for this evening and a report will attach to next week's packet. And our next meeting is May 13th at 6:00. And the next meeting also will be renewing the CCL ProZek Contractor Technology Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Swiger?
Next week, I will be asking the board to approve two resignations. One is Beth Cooper, who is a confidential secretary in the curriculum office at Central Office, and Anna Schall, food service employee who is retiring at the end of the school year. We appreciate their service to the school district and our students. In addition, next week, I will be asking the board to approve some additional substitute teachers as well as a group of summer student workers. I think this is the third summer that we've hired approximately four to five students to assist with cleaning and other things in the school district in the summer. In addition, we will ask the board to approve the last assistant football coach at the junior high school, and that is Brandon Simpson, as well as appoint a full-time custodian, which is a replacement for someone who resigned previously. And that person's name is James Murray. That will be on the agenda for next week. As well as approving a custodial substitute, Bonita Myers. In addition, an annual item is to approve the school psychology intern that works with Dr. Soltis, in this case for the 2014-15 school year at a stipend of $7,000. Her name is Gina Evan or Yvonne. I'm not sure what the correct pronunciation is. And she will be an intern from California University of Pennsylvania. Those are the items for approval next week. In addition, you have some important dates. As Adam mentioned, tomorrow night is the National Honor Society induction ceremony. And I always note that that is the beginning of the end. And Mr. Lucassio, Mr. Shivich, and Mr. Engel will be at school just about every evening from now to the end of the year because of all the events, as well as the junior high and elementary people as well, because of all of the end of the year culminating type of events. And you have some others listed at the end of your agenda besides the National Honor Society. All of you are surrounded by the wonderful elementary artwork in these two areas that continues this week. Tomorrow night is Mountain View Elementary School's opening, as well as on Thursday evening is Bagley Elementary School's opening. All of the work is displayed at the same time. In addition, the Breakfast of Champions this month is Thursday, April 24th, as of every year, every month in the morning at 7:30. If you are interested in experiencing a kids fishing derby, it is an annual event. It is April 26th at Rundery Park. Latrobe Rotary helps to sponsor this as well. So, if you want to help or you want to fish...
Or you want to watch?
Or you want to watch. I think they actually stock the fish at 9:00, at 8:30, and you come and catch them at 9:00. I think the return is pretty good. It's a really wonderful event. If you have any interest, it is... begins at 9:00 and runs till noon that day. The baccalaureate program this year is scheduled for Monday, June 9th at Holy Family Church at 7 PM for your calendars. And then the monthly meetings for April, next Tuesday is our regular meeting, and then in May is May 13th and May 20th. As well as last month, we noted the Artist of the 21st Century Student Art Exhibition is still going on at Sam and Leganier through April 17th.
There are just a couple of things I'd like to say. I don't know whether I have more time or I choose to spend it differently, but I always go to baccalaureate and I wish more board members would. It's very interesting to see what our students make of this opportunity every year. It's usually very... it's different every year, but it's the same every year. And you really ought to be there to see what is happening. It's a good thing. And finally, I'd like to talk about the Breakfast of Champions a little bit because I was thinking about it the whole time the caring cats' presentation was going on. It's good to know that being rewarded for being a caring cat doesn't end in elementary school. It stretches all the way to 12th grade because every month when we come to the Breakfast of Champions, we hear about students who are smiling every... are smiling every morning at the difficult hour that their classes begin, who help their teachers remember things, who help their teachers carry things, who help other students who aren't doing well in the class, who are always the one to raise a hand, to make a suggestion. And it's really good to see these students, the whole point was that these were supposed to be students who would not otherwise get special recognition in the high school. So sometimes we have someone who you've heard the name before, but usually you have kids who, I mean, they're so proud to be chosen and their parents are there with them. And they, they do what they do not because they thought they were going to be chosen for an award, but simply because that's the way they are. But there's a teacher who's watching and who brings them up and gives them an award and it's a great thing. You should all be there and see it. Oh, that's, that's the end of my sermon for this evening. Does anybody else have anything to add before we adjourn? You know, you have to take your opportunities when you have them. Okay, thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned.